All right. So with that, we're going to open the public hearing. So a public hearing is held today, March 4th, 2025. The council chambers to consider the adoption of ordinance number 2025-016 to men chapters 11, 19, and 1141, and to add new chapter 1152, to be known as the City of Findlay Cannabis Zoning Ordinance, adopting, approving, and incorporating the entire text of the aforementioned amended chapters and new chapter 1152 into the codified ordinances of the City of Findlay, Ohio, repealing ordinance number 2024-081 in order to eliminate the current 12-month moratorium established in said ordinance upon the adoption of said new cannabis zoning chapters. Now, this is why we pay her the big bucks. She does this all night. And I'm not used to doing this. Said ordinance has been available for public inspection in the county clerk's office and also the Hancock Regional Planning Office located on third floor municipal building during, excuse me, normal business hours, which are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Said ordinance, if passed on March 4th, 2025, will go into effect 30 days later unless subjected to a referendum vote. I, President of Council John Harrington, ask if anybody wishes to address counsel. At this point in time, I've had three. You don't necessarily have to fill this out, so if you want to, you'll get the chance. But let's poll. All right, get messed up here. Let's let, how about we let Bruce go first? How about, how about Bruce? Does that sound good? So at the podium, come on up to the podium. Make sure the red light's on, on the microphone, there's a little button there. All right? And state your name, and state your address, and then the four minutes will start after that. All right?
Sure. Bruce Ottley, 9066 Pierce Road, Findlay, Ohio. And council members, I just sincerely thank you for the opportunity to bring my concerns to you. And I'm speaking today in my capacity as the Superintendent at Liberty Benton Local Schools because I have concerns about one of the proposed locations for one of the cannabis dispensaries that the council may be voting on. Moreover, I'm concerned that the City of Findlay would allow cannabis dispensaries in the city itself. As an educator, I'm a protector of our youth, and I'm also a child advocate. And we know that cannabis is a gateway drug. In fact, research suggests that if experimenting before the age of 18, one in six council members, one in six, will develop an addiction to the drug. I also used to live in the Western Meadows subdivision. I lived there for approximately 20 years. My children played in neighbors' backyards, and that is but a stone's throw away from one of the locations the council may be approving for one of these dispensaries. We run school buses past that location every single day, and I do not want my students driving past a cannabis dispensary to and from school and walking past it on their way I sincerely hope that the council uses some of the things that I had to say in discerning and applying their wisdom, as I know most of the council members here are also closely affiliated, I've read your bios, with organizations which also protect and advocate for youth. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to speak, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none? Thank you. All right. Our second, Brenda, you want to come on? Again, state your name, your address, and then we'll start the timer.
Brenda Frankert, 325 California Avenue, Findlay, Ohio.
Yeah. Thank you.
I am here tonight as a neighbor living in the Western Meadows subdivision for 19 years, only feet outside of the Findlay city limits at the I-75 and West Main Cross intersection. As a concerned residential neighbor and a 26-year school administrator of Liberty Benton Local Schools, I am here against putting a cannabis dispensary at this location. It is clear that the members of the Findlay City Council are more concerned about bringing in tax money from cannabis dispensaries and less concerned about the impact it will have on our local community and especially our nearby residential areas in Liberty Township. It is clear with the majority of approved locations being mapped out to occur right along I-75 that you are hoping to draw as much out-of-town traffic and customers as possible. It is an extremely poor taste that you have mapped out these dispensary locations that are out of sight and out of mind from where you are residing yourselves. Your consideration of putting a cannabis dispensary at the I-75 and West Main Cross exit puts it easily within walking distance to the Western Meadows neighborhood, the Thimbleberry neighborhood, and the Riverview Terrace Trailer Park neighborhood. All of these neighborhoods have children outside at play every day, and Liberty Benton has bus stops within 100 feet of your proposed cannabis dispensary. Living within the Western Meadows neighborhood only feet away, we would see out-of-town traffic coming off of 75 wandering into our neighborhood. We do not welcome the clientele from this type of business to wander through the neighborhood that is full of activity with kids playing outside, neighbors walking, kids riding their bikes safely, and so forth. It is a great neighborhood for local families, and we are here to keep it that way. We are against a cannabis dispensary at the I-75 and West Main Cross location. Drug use leads to increases in crime, thefts, burglaries, risk of human trafficking, and violence, all with easy access to jump right onto I-75 to make their escape. You would be creating a high-risk environment. Back when government officials were looking for a site for the new juvenile court building, the mall was at first considered. One of the main complaints from the judge was the Dunham store in the mall sold guns, and therefore it was an inappropriate location. Just two driveways north through the proposed I-75 West Main Cross intersection is a gun store. Putting a cannabis dispensary so close is not an appropriate decision. We do not need this location to be a one-stop shop right off of I-75 for criminal activity. Have you even looked closely at the surroundings for your proposed locations, or are you only concerned about rolling in tax dollars for cannabis sales? A cannabis dispensary brings, belongs in a strip mall environment or a business setting, not within such a close-by neighborhood setting. It is also an extremely poor consideration that the City of Findlay would place such an establishment within 100 feet of the city boundary lines and force this upon the neighborhood's homeowners nearby in Liberty Township. This is not looking out for everyone's best interest. This is not being a good Hancock County neighbor. This is not an action that helps us all to stay safe. If the elected members of Findlay City Council support this cannabis dispensary, then let these elected officials look for a location within 500 feet of your own households and keep it away from our bus stops. How about we all focus on safety here in the flag city and continue to see importance in being one of the top 100 communities for raising young people? You have drastically changed the course in your priorities for the City of Findlay, and that is extremely sad.
Thank you, Brenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments to Brenda? Thank you. All right. Last to speak, based on a written, is Lisa Reeder. I hope I pronounced your name right? Yeah, all right. And same thing, please state your name, your address, and then you'll, the timer will start.
Lisa Reeder, 1605 Dakota Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am here as a concerned resident of the Western Meadows subdivision to voice my strong opposition to the proposed marijuana dispensary near Interstate 75 West Main Cross. Our community is a place where families feel safe, where children play outside, and where we take pride in the strong welcoming environment we have built. Allowing a dispensary in such close proximity threatens to disrupt that. While I recognize that marijuana is legal, that does not mean a dispensary belongs in a family-friendly area. We need to think carefully about where these businesses are placed. Having one near our homes and schools sends the wrong message and raises real concerns about safety, crime, and overall well-being of our neighborhood. Additionally, the proposed location near a major highway adds another level of risk. High-traffic areas are often exploited for illegal activities, including drug trafficking and human trafficking. Placing a dispensary near such a transportation route could attract unwanted activity and pose dangers we simply cannot ignore. Beyond safety concerns, the dispensary could also impact property values and discourage families from moving into our neighborhood. Many of us have worked hard to build this community into a place where people want to raise their children. This decision does not align with that vision. I urge you to think about the long-term effects this could have on our neighborhood. There are more appropriate locations for a business like this one, one that does not put my family and children at risk. Please prioritize the safety, stability, and character of our community by rejecting this proposal for the dispensary on Interstate 75 and West Main Cross. Thank you for your time in considering the voices of the people who call this neighborhood home.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody have any questions or comment? All right. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak for this? Anybody else like to speak against this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Darmann.
Thank you. So when this was on the ballot, I voted against cannabis. And I agree with almost all the comments made. You know, but this was passed in the City of Findlay by 52%. Six out of seven precincts, wards, passed it. The people have spoken. I mean, I disagree with it, but I have to go with what my ward and what the city voters have voted for. And so I'll be voting for it, but in my heart, I'm against it. I want you to know. I don't agree with cannabis. I don't think, I don't think it's good for our community. I don't think it's good for our kids. But the people have spoken, and that, and that's what I have to go with. The one thing that I did, I would like to comment, we're talking about the tax revenue. You know, we've been talking about this for six months, and never in any conversation was tax revenue brought up. This is not tax motivated. That was, I couldn't care less about that. I mean, in terms of, that's not what's important in this case. I mean, what's important is our children and our community, and it's not, it's not tax-based driven. I can, you know, that's never come up in a conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
Councilman Darmann, I don't know where you're getting the fact that our community voted for the cannabis ordinance that was on the ballot in '23 because I have the voting results, and 53.29% voted no to the cannabis ordinance. Would you like me to pass it down to you? And if that's the case, would you be willing to change your vote then?
Man, is that correct? That's not the conversation he had.
Grant Russell provided the data.
That's the data straight from the Board of Elections.
County-wide or city-wide? I thought county. The county voted against it, but the city...
The vote for 60 precincts.
The county...
The vote for 60 precincts, which included, I believe, the entire county and city, which we should not be separating that out, in my view. It's like a needle in a haystack. I don't have, I didn't poll each individual precinct, but 53% said no. And for that reason, I'm going to vote against the ordinance because we, they can have it in other communities, and we're not, you know, and so they legalized marijuana for recreational. We don't have to have a cannabis area. And the fact when we made these maps or when the committee worked on the maps, one of their priorities was they didn't want it near Findlay City Schools. But it's okay to do it to Liberty Benton Schools? That's, that's shame on you.
I'm representing my ward, my city. That's what I was elected to do.
You were...
Hang on. Mayor.
So I think this discussion would be more appropriate when the ordinance comes up.
This is a debate.
However, the state law is that it has to be a certain distance from all schools. So the boundaries of the overlays do comply with daycare, churches, and schools. The distances do comply. Additionally, when council was looking at the potential overlay areas, those are closer to the highway because they are more commercially oriented. Additionally, the proposal would also put a conditional use, so any individual location within those areas would also still have to come back to City Planning Commission as well as council as a whole for consideration. So just because it is within that area, it still has to meet the state requirements as well as come before council for individual location consideration. So I just think that that's important information to share.
Ms. Frishy.
And I think another point to the discussion when we started this, I don't know if the public, if they want, specifically Liberty Benton, if it was an industrial area, which we originally had looked at, industrial is not impacting any residential from what I can tell for the most part. I think we have to consider Allen Township a little bit, but it's at least not in the heart of our town, and if people really want to purchase from that location, there, it's not in our downtown, it's not near our school, we're not mixing it with alcohol, we're not making it as easily accessible to the youngest kids.
Let's make one more comment. It's a public hearing from the public, and then we'll bring up the rest of this during conversation when the ordinance is. Are there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this point in time? Again, I'm sorry, Superintendent, but yeah, come on up. Again, state your name, state your address, and you've got four minutes.
My name is Megan Woolley, and I, my family owns the property at 15440 US 224 East. We also represent the business Becky School of Dance, who has been in Findlay for 61 years now. We moved to this location over 30 years ago due to the fact that our previous location out on Trenton Avenue was getting a little bit unsavory. I don't agree with recreational marijuana. I don't have a problem with medical marijuana. There is a medical marijuana store in Bowling Green. I don't feel that we need any closer than that. I don't think that's such a far drive to get it. I do have a problem with my, I call them my children, our 500 students, driving past a medical marijuana that is close to our building. I don't know where you're planning within the circled area to have that near, but if it's near our dance studio, I would not like our children to be seeing that multiple times a week. You know, kids are very impressionable, and I just don't think that they should be driving past it and seeing it all the time.
Thank you. Somebody sitting, well, hang on, let's give everybody else, yeah. Then we'll get to the other guy in the back here. All right?
Hello, my name is Ethan Orions. My wife is the current owner of Becky School of Dance. I will say previously, I'm an architectural draftsman. I've been in the profession approximately 20 years. That being said, I was in Michigan when they passed their laws. I was involved in designing some dispensaries. Now being where I'm at, I'm not opposed to it, however, I am concerned about the safety of children, obviously. And I just, I'm not, what do I say, up on the laws currently, as I'm not involved with it here. However, I just want to make sure that appropriate measures are taken just for safety of children. There is multiple times we have shown up at the property and under the porter's chair, you could smell that somebody had been there using marijuana, and that is just a safety concern of ours. Thank you.
All right. State your name and address.
Yep, my name's Aaron Butler, 1918 Wyoming Trail, Western Meadows. Just a few things. First, thanks for being here. I know it's hard work, do what you gotta do, and I'm sure it's not easy. One of the points that Mrs. Frishy, she said, or she said that 52% was to, they vote, we voted to legalize, or we as a whole voted to legalize marijuana. That doesn't necessarily mean, I think Mrs. Frish was making the point, that just because we legalize it does not necessarily mean that, that there should be a dispensary. Just because I believe or don't believe, kid vote passes, but that doesn't, there was a leap there taken from it's legalized, so how is it that just because it's legalized, there's a dispensary all of a sudden? So I would like to know the mind behind that as to how that came across as, okay, 52%. And I also think that, what's that?
52% or 53% of Hancock County voted against that legislation. So does the state have legislation? I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for that. And I, and I think that, so either way, though, whether legalized against or for, legalized does not imply to put a dispensary in. It just means that it's legalized. So I think there's a leap taken there on somebody's part, if not just yours, or I don't know who all, how this all voted, but I think that we as the people who are being involved, at least in the one on 99 or 75 and West Main Cross, I think we'd like to know how that leap was made. But, yeah, and I think there's also a difference between a recreational, at least in Colorado, there's a recreational, the difference between a recreation and a medical dispensary. Is there a difference here in Ohio? Can anybody address those questions? Thanks.
Okay. Hang on. She has a question for you or her.
No, I was going to respond to you. So originally, we placed a moratorium. Sorry. I'm pretty loud, though, right? We originally placed a moratorium not to allow recreational, and then we, the committee that does zoning was, started having discussions about having dispensaries. So that's where it all came from, but we placed a moratorium saying no. I believe every other township voted, they have passed something that they're not allowing dispensaries. Yes, you can smoke it, you can have a couple plants at your home, nobody's discrepancying that, but it went in to all of a sudden moving quickly on having dispensary locations. I don't, Brian's not here, is he? Or Brian's on that committee, aren't you, Brian? That you can give him better detail of how it started moving so quickly?
Mr. Baumann.
I think that there's kind of a misconception here, and that is that we planned this so that they could come here. Now, what we did was, we laid it out on the map, and we zoned areas that they could come here. Just because we are doing this does not mean they will come here, or that they have planned shops.
So it can be voted down entirely?
What it is, is that it's an area in which they can come here, and not that they are coming here, or they, it's in the works that they are coming here. It is just that we wanted to get ahead of the curve in terms of state law and the like in order to, in order to find what we thought were suitable areas based on the commercial zoning in kind of proximity to, to those areas. So that, it is clearly, it is zoning-based. It is not, with all of the necessary state-required guidelines and guardrails on it. And I think that there's a little bit of a misconception about what these places, when they operate, actually do and how they operate, and that is, one cannot just simply walk off the street and, and go into these locations. You have to have an ID. They have to take your ID down, your information down, and then you are allowed into this place. It's not that anybody can just, there's a process, in other words. And I think that that's a little, that's, that's where, I think where there's a little bit of a miscommunication there on that, and that is, we felt that this was the best way to do it with the state guidelines and the information that we had, so that we would not perhaps in the future get kind of blindsided by future development.
I mean, with that, it's suggestive, though, at one point of what you're saying is that, and I respect, thank you for your thoughts, by the way, but it's suggestive that, that it's almost like because the state says it's legal, that the City of Findlay therefore has to, has to have an obligatory vote of some sort. Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing as far as the mind of how this is working. So why is this, why did this even come to the table?
What we've done here is we've created the opportunity for that, not the, it's, in other words, I guess if I left you with anything, it's not a done deal. They still have to go through our processes, City Planning Commission, all of the guardrails that that entails.
And they being the retailers or distributors?
Yes, yes. They have to, they have to come to us.
Is somebody currently trying to get a distribution license here?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
We're just trying to make headway for the person who might want it.
No, what we're trying to do is get ahead of it regulatorily, speaking, in order that when they do come here, if they do come here, it's done correctly.
And again, so the heart of Findlay, it sounds like at one level across the board here, not just on council, that if the heart of Findlay is that this is, that if, it just seems very, from, from my understanding of Findlay, it just seems, it doesn't seem that this is an overall Findlay-type thinking. I could be wrong, and apparently some of the numbers suggest it differently.
And to be honest with you, your thought there was very much involved with, within the way we drew these, drew these lines, because we, we took that into account. We don't want these next to our population centers, just like we don't want them next to our schools, in that, and so that was, that was very heavy, that was a heavily, you know, heavy part of the process when we were, we were writing this ordinance up with very good help from Hancock Regional Planning, but that's, that's just kind of where it's at.
The second mayor's got a comment?
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good. I appreciate it. So I just wanted to provide a couple of points of clarification. So you are correct that we could determine just no, we don't want to allow them at all. That is an option. I would say that, you know, tonight, the majority of the feedback has been opposition. We have also heard from folks in support, and as was clarified, the county did vote 53% against it. However, within the city limits, it was 52% in favor, so that is why council decided to have the conversation. The council members are correct in that by establishing these overlays, that says these are the areas that if you are going to come in, you are permitted. You still have to go as a conditional use to city planning and back to council as a full. That also allows for additional public comment. You have to meet all of the state licensing requirements through the Department of Commerce, which it also includes no outside. It would provide us opportunities for limitations on exterior advertisements as well as security protocols. And one of the conversations that we have had is, obviously, people can individually grow it in their home and smoke it, so we're not preventing that from occurring. Additionally, there are also strands of marijuana that are currently available at smoke shops across our community. Personally, these marijuana dispensaries, again, whatever council decides, I don't, I don't have a horse in the race because I see pros and cons of it, but they're, the smoke shops, the adult mart, some of these other establishments in our community, I think, are more harmful than marijuana. I think marijuana does have medicinal purpose. I agree. Recreational purposes, I'm not a super fan of, but what we are voting on here, whichever way council decides to go, we'll just say, here are the commercial districts which they are permitted, and then we can determine individual locations that meet the state requirements as well as then come to city council, and we can determine if they are appropriate. So I just wanted to provide a couple of clarifications because it is an onus process, as it should be, and just tonight, if they determine to move forward, this would not be the last say in individual locations that would be considered.
So there'd be more hearings, there'd be more thought discussed?
Correct. Yep. Additionally, I want, one piece of feedback is, have any of the folks that have brought up concerned attended the previous meetings? Because you said this was kind of a last-minute meeting, but really over the last three months, and really the last six months, we've had discussion on this. So it was brought up at the end of the year, and we said, hey, we're going to give six months of buffer to wait what state regulations are put in place. And then we took it to planning and zoning and had two or three meetings where they discussed the individual overlay areas, and now this is its third reading, so we've had a month and a half of discussion on this. And so I hear what you're saying, and I don't make light of the concerns, but I also think that there have been opportunities for you to say, hey, we actually want this overlay district shrunk. And so I hear what you're saying, and I don't make light of the concerns, but I also think that there have been opportunities for you to say, hey, we actually want this overlay district shrunk along Interstate 75 because of some of the concerns, and I think it would have been really beneficial. Now, they can technically still amend it tonight if we wanted to shrink it, but I think that, again, that this is not something that we have taken lightly and rushed through, and I don't want that to be the perception. This has been something that has been talked about for multiple months, with multiple opportunities for public impact, input before we got to the meeting this evening.
So I thank you for that. I think, I think there's, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding in terms of the people that I'm aware of and the people who I generally congregate with and those kinds of things. We don't have, we don't have our Facebook page for the city of Findlay, meaning we don't necessarily, all the things that go on in the city of Findlay, we're not privy to. And so I think that, you know, in terms of, we have to weigh out what is important. And so sometimes the things that go on in this council chambers, we don't hear about because frankly, they're just not, they're just not there yet. And so when we get to that point where we have the time to be here, we will make that time. Based on this, one of the questions I have for you is that you said there's pros and cons to marijuana use. Could you help us understand what your views of pros and cons are on marijuana?
Yeah, so I've had a number of individuals, glaucoma, cancer, PTSD, sleep issues, that it does provide medical benefit for, and that is my primary focus. You know, I think that it provides benefit. Personally, I wish that the federal government would make it a controlled substance. My background before coming into, as mayor, was in pain management, and so I worked with a lot of individuals who had extreme chronic and acute pain issues, and were trying to get them away from opioids. So I think it has a primarily medical benefit, but again, folks have voted for it in a recreational capacity, but it is still a regulated substance, just like alcohol uses, just like tobacco uses, just like other strands of marijuana are. And so that's, I think, the very challenging part of this, is because it's muddy. I personally wish that it was federally regulated and more of a controlled substance, but I think that the perception that it is somehow going to detrimentally, just by being located in a neighborhood, create a bunch of crime and negatively impact our children, I think is a little bit overblown.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
All right. Bruce, you, I think you're the last one, and since you spoke before, you get the last word.
Well, I appreciate that privilege, and again, thank you for allowing me to come to the podium a second time. Earlier, I heard council members mention something to the effect of, we're truly interested in doing what's best for our youth in the community, and I don't see anything positive for our youth coming from this. I'm speaking to you with 30 years of experience as an educator, 17 of those as a principal, and now a superintendent, so I've had plenty of interactions with youth with regards to taking things away from them that they probably shouldn't have had at school. And I know where kids get the things that they shouldn't have. You know, they're not going to go to a dispensary and legally purchase pot because they're not able to, but their parents and their older siblings are going to have those things available to them in the home, and from there, we will see them in our schools. I know this because that's exactly what's happened with vaping. For quite a period of time, we didn't see a lot of cigarette use in schools, and that was mainly because if you lit a cigarette, there was the telltale odor, there was ash, and there was fire involved, and schools are full of all kinds of alarms that set those things off. Enter vape, a substance that is, in my opinion, targeting young people, because it comes in all sorts of flavors that smell like bubble gum, raspberries, watermelons, bananas, you name it, there's a flavor. And it's virtually indetectable unless you're trying to use them at Liberty Benton in one of our restrooms or locker rooms, because we've got sensors that pick it up. But you can get away with it if you're crafty. And my concern is that THC-infused products, not just stinky weed, but THC-infused products are going to make their way into our schools. We've already seen that with vaping, and I think it's just a matter of time, if Findlay City allows cannabis dispensaries, that we will, we'll see those products also with our kids, and that concerns me. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Mr. Stachak.
Just a quick comment as your fiscal officer, and from a fiscal officer's perspective. I think the point that just because there's a law passed that says it's legal, I think the separate thought process that, yeah, let's zone and set things up so that we can put one here. I think those are two independent lines of thought. I think that point was very well made tonight. And I will say to you, as your fiscal officer, again, and from my concern from future liability, in other words, if you're sitting there thinking, just because we passed this tonight, I'm not going to support any one of these facilities of a certain type coming into my community. If you pass this tonight, you've sent the message to the world that you're welcoming an undefined type of business in this area coming. And if you truly don't intend to do that, maybe this legislation needs to be more thoroughly considered and more specific as to what you do intend, because as the council for this city, you certainly have the right to do that. And again, from the fiscal officer's perspective, just taking that simple step makes it much tougher for you to wind it back when a lawsuit is filed in the court saying, hey, they passed a rule saying this type of business can be here, and they weren't specific saying our particular type of that type of business can't be. So be well-considered and well-thought, and good luck to you.
Okay. I think that concludes the comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Mr. Baumann, second, Mr. Palmer, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We are adjourned. All right, so, so the public, because a lot of you were here for what we just talked about. Hang on a second, let me get this filled out here, and it is 6:34.